Good evening. I'd like to call the September eighteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the University Heights City Council to order. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Cooney?
Here.
Mrs. Weiss?
Here.
Mr. Rock?
Here.
Ms. Marshall?
Here.
Ms. Weiser?
Here.
Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to your government, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item is a special item. It's the promotion and swearing-in of Officer Chris York to the rank of sergeant. I will join, uh, Jolene York at the podium to administer the oath. If you'll raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Christopher York.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the charter.
And the charter.
And ordinances.
And ordinances.
Of the city of University Heights.
Of the city of University Heights.
As well as the regulations.
As well as the regulations.
Of the division of police.
Of the division of police.
Thereof.
Thereof.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
In my position.
In my position.
As sergeant.
As sergeant.
For so long.
For so long.
As I may hold.
As I may hold.
Such position.
Such position.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Next item is the reading and disposal of the journal. We have two sets of minutes. The first set is from June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Sigh.
Motion to approve by Mrs. Sax, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Weiss, any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Abstain.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Abstain.
Very good, the motion, uh, motion carries. Uh, next, we have a set of minutes from September fifth, twenty twenty-three. Is there a motion?
Yes. Several comments or corrections. First one on page five, under the report, communications with the city council, taking of action thereon. Second paragraph, um, third line down, that should be stump speech, S-T-U-P-E speech. And then there was one other one on the words from economic development. I asked a question about the townhomes, uh, on page eight. This would be the second full paragraph down, second to last line, it mentions thirteen units, that should be thirty units.
Very good. Are there any other changes? With those changes, is there, Kelly, uh, Mrs. Thomas, you got those changes, have?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Uh, with those changes, is there a motion to approve the minutes with those changes?
Sigh.
Motion by Mr. Rock, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Weiser. Any discussion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sax?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Weiss?
Aye.
Mr. Rock?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Okay, very good, motion carries. Next is additions and removals from the agenda and referrals to committee. Are there any additions or removals? Are there any referrals to committee? Seeing none, we will now go to comments from the audience. Speakers are limited to five minutes. Uh, we would ask that anybody who wants to address the city this evening, come up to the podium, state their name and address for the record, and they may take up to five minutes to address the city.
Good evening, I'm Marilyn Singer. I am the observer for the League of Women Voters for University Heights, one of them anyway, and I, um, just want to advise council and the citizens of University Heights that the League of Women Voters is sponsoring two events relative to the upcoming election in University Heights. The first event is a candidate's forum for University Heights City Council candidates, and that is going to be held from six to eight P M. on Tuesday, September twenty-sixth, at the University Heights Library Branch on Cedar Road. And the second event is an information session for all citizens about the University Heights Charter Amendments, and that information session is scheduled for Thursday, October fifth, from six to eight P M., also at the University Heights Library Branch. And the community is invited to submit questions for the candidates and speakers, and that can be done by email to heights@lwvgreatercleland.org. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Miss Singer, um, who's going to be presenting at the, has been determined who will be presenting at the, uh, the, the meetup on the charter review events?
I forgot my phone.
Okay, okay.
I don't have that information. Um, I know that Mr. Wertheim is one of the presenters, and there are at least two others, and I don't recall who that is.
Okay, but they're members of the Charter Review Commission, that's all. Okay, very good, thank you. Uh, we're still on comments from the audience, uh, is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening?
No, I didn't.
Okay, okay.
Hi, my name is Monika Brent, Montecito Ford, Glendale, Avenue. Thank you for the patience for whoever was gonna speak. I will be very brief. I just happened to be to stay rep, just stopping by today. I'm gonna sit through the whole time, so if you guys wanna talk to me, more than willing to stop and talk. Main reason why I'm here, because I brought district directories, these are taxpayer dollars, hats all your elected officials from the county, local, federal, and state level, because one of the calls I get most University Heights people is phone numbers. And even though we think we have a lot of people that have means, a lot of people still do not know how to use the internet to make sure they are getting that information, so I'm making sure that those are available. I just put like hundred at Cleveland Heights Library, they're all gone within two days. So I'm putting them out at hundreds at a time in our library, and they're coming, going at a large amount of ti- a large amount, because people need information. And we have to make sure that information is accessible and ready and available to way people can receive it. And sometimes it's not just putting it on the internet, sometimes making sure it is printed, and making sure we use our taxpayer dollars. So these are your taxpayer dollars that are hand for these books, and I have plenty, more than just this in my bag today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Representative Brent. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening? Please approach the podium, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Bartel, and I reside at two four seven five Saber Road. I wanted to introduce myself to all of you this evening, and with the exception of Mr. Cooney, Mr. King, Mrs. Sax, and Vice Mayor Weiss, I have not met, spoken to, or had the opportunity to know any of the other members of the city council. As I said, my name is Jonathan Bartel, I'm a resident of University Heights, and I'm also running for city council this November. Uh, I've lived in this community for most of my life and made a decision to return to University Heights more than twenty-five years ago with my spouse to reestablish roots and begin our family. Now that our son has left the nest, I have some extra time, and I would like to dedicate that time to public service. That being said, that I want you to know, if the good residents of University Heights were to elect me to serve on council, that I will work with each and every one of you on council, and for the betterment of our city, and on behalf of the residents. I hold no grudges, nor any preconceived notions of any of your characters, and that is what has brought me forward today to speak to you. Recently, some members of council have proclaimed on their city Facebook accounts that I would be a rubber stamp or pass budgets without the consideration for the mayor if elected. First, members of city council should never, ever denigrate a resident of city, of the resident of the city for city council business. It is unbecoming of the position you hold and has no place in this forum. Second, and I'm specifically directing this to you, Mr. Rock, with all due respect, you and I have never met, we've never spoken to each other, and other than within these four walls, have never been in the same room together. Yet you claim in your post that you know me. If you knew me, or would have discussed my character with my friends or family or neighbors, you would know that I'm the antithesis of a rubber stamp, that I would never capitulate to anyone just because they ask. And since we have never met, you're not aware of my nature with the mayor, how we met, or even when we met. Agreeing on certain policy measures does not make one a rubber stamp. However, if elected, I promise to the residents that I will approach each and every bit of council business with independent open-mindedness and independent consideration. Nonetheless, despite these false statements made, I pledge cooperation and congeniality to work with each and every one of you if I am so lucky, and I do appreciate the time this evening, and I hope again we can have future conversations with each other. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Bartel. Is there anybody else who would care to address the city this evening? Last call, um, comments from the audience. Okay, very good. And we'll move on to reports and communications from the mayor and the taking of action thereon. Tonight, my mayor's report focuses on University Square. The city of University Heights has been actively engaged in seeking the redevelopment of University Square since twenty fifteen. It was at that time that the city worked in cooperation with the bondholders, who held the bonds and financed the project back in two thousand and one, to foreclose on the property. Up to that point, the property was then on its third owner, who was not paying the property taxes that serviced the bonds. As a result of that proceeding, the bondholders came into possession of University Square. When I was first elected to this office in twenty seventeen, I began taking meetings even before I was sworn in. I met with the representative of the majority bondholder, Joe Lane, I met with the trustee of the bondholders, Lauren Leeson of U M B Bank, I met with the city law director of the company, and we got to work. By twenty nineteen, we had our developers lined up, K L Holdings comprised of Brad Pellet and Greg Levy. The first phase is to convert the Cedar Road Tower, where T J Maxx used to be, into a six-story apartment building with commercial and retail on the ground level. The second phase, addressing the Morningsville Tower, where Tops Grocery Store and Joann Fabrics used to be, is officially to be determined, but it is likely to incorporate a venue for active and family entertainment. The problem since twenty nineteen has been reaching an agreement between K L Holdings and Target and Macy's to modify the longstanding construction, operation, and reciprocal easement agreement, or Korea, that governs various rights and responsibilities between the original or subsequent developers, Target and Macy's. This agreement also contains certain land use restrictions. As a prime example, at the time the parties entered the Korea, residential uses were not desired and therefore excluded at University Square. However, since entering the Korea in March of two thousand and two, the view on mixed use has changed not only generally, but also among the stakeholders for this particular development. In order for the sale of University Square to close, the parties must agree to the changes to the Korea that allow for the intended redevelopment, the apartment component, to allow that to proceed. Since twenty nineteen, the parties have negotiated, but have failed to come to terms. I'm gonna skip over an entire pandemic, but in the summer of twenty twenty-two, I invited all parties to city hall to negotiate person under my supervision to break through the long jam and close the deal on mending the Korea. While Target and Macy's initially declined my invitation to come to city hall, this did cause movement on their part towards the negotiation of a memorandum of understanding, just as the threat amendment domains we were seen to in twenty twenty-one. This M O U is between the city, K L Holdings, Target, and Macy's, and it set forth the outline to close the deal, including renegotiation of the Korea. Included in this M O U are numerous things, but included a commitment in principle that the city, through its Community Investment Corporation, or C I C, would take title to the University Square parking garage. Having a not-for-profit entity hold the garage has tax advantages that make the numbers work on the redevelopment. It makes the city and the C I C an active player officially at the table, rather than just an interested party in private transaction. The garage would not transfer to the C I C until the garage has not only been brought to code, but has been approved and rightsized through Appeal Act, meaning that it will be demolished and parted. And as the developers will remain responsible for the management and regular maintenance of the parking garage, the city and C I C's obligations towards long-term capital improvements would be incremental. By agreement, the C I C, and by extension of the funding by the city, the city, would be responsible for just one-third of funds needed, fifty thousand dollars a year for ten years, to create a reserve fund covering the cost of these major capital improvements. The city's annual outline is a fraction of the projection of the income tax to be collected by the city annually from just phase one of the project. This would be a net win for the city, a comparatively small outline for substantial return on investment, all while redeveloping a long-distressed and blighted site at the heart of our city. This M O U was executed by the parties in full earlier this year. Negotiations per that framework commenced. However, final terms on renegotiated Korea still had not been reached. Over the course of the last year, the bondholders have been operating University Square from a position of financial distress. It costs more to operate and maintain the shopping center than they have been collecting from the stakeholders in tenants. Over time, the insurance lapsed, and Target picked it up. Same with the snowplow, same with garage maintenance, and the catching up on deferred maintenance. Indeed, Target's commitment to making upwards of two-point-six million dollars in repairs to the garage is set forth in the M O U. Finally, unable to hold off creditors any longer, University Square Real Estate Holdings LLC filed bankruptcy in July of this year. In addition to protection from creditors, the bankruptcy court has powers that would allow the sale of the University Square property to happen while setting aside the Korea. This changes the relative bargaining positions of the stakeholders considerably. It takes Target and Macy's out of the driver's seat. To put it bluntly, instead of negotiating from a position of strength, where Target and Macy's dictate what they are willing to allow, they could be told by the court how it is going to be. It is not inconceivable that the Korea in its entirety could be voided or otherwise set aside by the court, requiring the negotiation of a new document to occur. If that happens, it may be rough justice, but it will break the impasse. That brings me to this last week. Originally, a hearing on the sale schedule was set for September fifth, after Target filed objections to the original schedule. The debtor, i.e. bondholders, moved jointly with Target and Macy's to continue that hearing to last Tuesday. It was initially believed that this continuous meant that progress had been made with Target and Macy's to come to terms per the M O U on mending the Korea. Instead, the hearing was held. Some stipulations on procedural issues. With only one bid anticipated, a breakup fee of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars will be due to K L Holdings if someone else makes a successful bid on University Square. Developers near and far have known about University Square for years, and there's no reason at this time to think anyone else will be bidding. The sale schedule itself has been extended from thirty days to ninety days. Instead of October eleventh, bids on the sale of University Square are now due on December eleventh, twenty twenty-three. The sale hearing will be held on December twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. In the interim, K L Holdings, Target, and Macy's can either complete the task of renegotiating the Korea, or argue the matter before the court and obtain a ruling on the Korea before the bid deadline in December. The sale should be confirmed following the December twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three hearing, and the real work of redeveloping University Square may begin after the first of the year. This brief delay is fortuitous for a second reason. The M O U between K L Holdings, Target, Macy's, and the city was approved by city council on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. Technically, it was non-binding, but it was a statement of principle made in good faith by the city when we wrote it on and when I signed it last year. Since then, we have had a change in composition of the city council. It seems we also had some changes in position with some city council members with respect to this redevelopment deal. After over eight years of work across two administrations, at the special meeting of city council of August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, with six members in attendance, a bare majority of four approved retaining legal counsel representing the city and its interests in the University Square bankruptcy. Vice Mayor Michelle Weiss voted no on hiring bankruptcy counsel. Council member John Rock abstained from the vote without offering any explanation as to a conflict of interest, or such other reason he had to abstain. It appears that, like Mrs. Weiss, Mr. Rock simply could not bring himself to vote to support to have the city's interest represented and heard in this bankruptcy either. The public ownership of the parking garage by the C I C is a necessary component of this deal. The redevelopment of University Square does not happen without the city or the C I C agreeing to take title to the parking garage, while K L Holdings manages and maintains the parking garage. The city's investment in a reserve fund in the long-term capital improvements to the garage represents a fraction of the revenue a redeveloped University Square will generate for the city. Not standing back, it does not appear we currently have a majority on city council, and maybe not on the C I C either, in support of the redevelopment of University Square. In addition to Mrs. Weiss and Mr. Rock not supporting the hiring of bankruptcy counsel, we have newly appointed council member Win Weiser's longstanding opposition to the deal going back to her time on the C I C, and in private conversations, her opposition appears to continue. Council members Rock and Sax seem to have joined her in that opposition to the University Square redevelopment deal. And don't forget, a bare minimum majority of four members of this council, council members Rock, Weiss, Sax, and Marshall, all put Ms. Weiser here on this council. They did that knowing her positions on this and other issues. The public needs to know that. The public needs to know that the redevelopment of University Square is in question after all this time, now, due to opposition by city council members elected and appointed. To my colleagues here on the council, you've got to stop reflexively opposing everything just to oppose the mayor. You aren't hurting me, you're hurting the city, you're hurting the people who live here, you're hurting the people who want to do business here, you're hurting the ability of the city to do business going forward. Members of council will get an opportunity in the next agenda item to make reports of their own. Some of them may try to rebut what I've said here. You can listen to what they have to say for themselves. But when you do that, don't forget to look at their actions, don't forget to look at their votes. Anybody can say anything, but in the end, if you support something, you vote for it. And if you didn't vote for it, then you didn't support it. That's true whether we're talking the South Taylor Place Condominiums, the Cedar Road Project, or now, University Square. It isn't enough to say that one supports the redevelopment of University Square, that isn't the question. The question is, do you support this deal, which includes public ownership of the garage? Because if you don't, then you do not support redevelopment of University Square, there is no third option. This is the deal. And to that end, and to the residents of this community, make sure the people you have on this city council on January one are the people who will do what you want to see done at University Square. People who will support the redevelopment plan to transform University Square into a vibrant mixed-use center that brings jobs and revenue to the city, or the people who are currently here who don't. These are the stakes. Thank you, this concludes my report. Next item is reports and communications from the city council and the taking of action thereon. Mrs. Weiss?
Well, I had no report, but I'm going to rebut what the mayor just said. It was very clear when I voted no on the contract for the bankruptcy attorney, that I stated beforehand I am a hundred percent in favor of University Square going forward. The reason I did not vote for it was because the mayor started work without a contract with an attorney when there was time beforehand to sign a contract and call a discussion. I am a hundred percent in favor of University Square, I ensure my colleagues are a hundred percent in favor of University Square. The comments that the mayor just made are indicative of what is wrong with this, with this body, this function, this lack of collaboration, this lack of respect for each other. This is, it's, it's unheard of, it's unheard of for a mayor to, to rally other citizens to run against a current council, to interfere with that, and I can tell you that I would be the first one to make sure that this council and any future council collaborates together respectfully and doesn't deal with a bully pulpit.
Thank you. Does anybody else have a report they'd like to give? Mr. Rock?
I too would like to give a rebuttal to your statement, which I shouldn't have to do, but it's becoming a pattern that you're using your mayor's report as a method of providing a stump speech, and that was a word I used in the last meeting, is, I haven't used it again today. As mayor, you should really be addressing residents about issues in the city and not campaigning for or against, uh, certain people on this body, and I understand you want a whole new council, you make that very clear. And this council works together pretty well. We all get along, we all respect for each other, and it's really just, you're the only one here that has an issue with council. You constantly intimidate us to vote the way you want us to vote, as you just did. A vote for it is support, a vote against is not support. A vote for it is support. A vote against is not support. And I'll tell you, there are times, sometimes you just have to table it so we can continue the conversation. For instance, the field house at John Carroll. Neither the police chief nor the fire chief nor the city engineer was comfortable passing the plan as presented. One thing missing was a fire lane. And you're the chief safety director of the city, and you pressured us to approve a plan without a fire lane. And you said so, using the exact words you said now, a vote to table this discussion is a vote against the project. And I voted to table because I wanted to see the fire lane put into the plans. Now, you may want to rush us into voting your way, and by the end of all this, we end up agreeing with 95% of your agenda. I went back and calculated it. And I understand you're looking for 100%, which I can't offer you. And there was a candidate for council here who came and said he's not going to be a rubber stamp, and I'm so grateful to hear that. But I, by definition, sort of rubber stamped your agenda when I approved 95% of what you bring forward. It's the 5% that creates good discussion and dialogue. But the one thing I really want to make note of is, yes, we were elected to be our mayor by 48% of this community. And we have seven people on this council who get along and have all different thoughts, but we can't always be lockstep with you. Your job as a leader is to provide consensus and provide consensus among the group. And when a board member says, gee, I think we should put a fire lane in this project that you criticize them, you're not building consensus. Your whole speech was, in my opinion, it was a scary thought that you're going to try to ram things through the city without any discussion. And if we so much table it so we can collect our thoughts and ask for more information, and then you're going to tell the residents, we don't support these initiatives, that's wrong. That's absolutely wrong. And I want this record to reflect, we do support University Square. I've given no evidence why I didn't. And for you to accuse me of abstaining from a vote because I don't support a project, I don't have to give you a reason why I abstained from a vote. There may have been a conflict of interest. There may not have been. Had I given you that explanation, I would have biased my colleagues in their vote if I explained what the conflict was. But I don't have to provide that to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rock.
Yes, I do want to respond. I don't deal with BS, and there was a lot of it. I haven't spoken to you about University Square and the MOU and what I think of it. You and I have never spoken about that. So you have no actual information at all. You have no factual information. Don't shake your head, mayor. You cannot say you have spoken to me about that MOU unless you want to lie. Go ahead, shake your head. Go ahead.
You have the floor. You'd like to continue.
Oh, I would. You've left out a few things. The total city in on the project is $1 million. Not $50,000 a year for 10 years. There's a $500,000 upfront in, if anyone reads the MOU. I don't have any problem, and I have said to people, I don't have any problem with the city putting in money to the developer to make the project go. I do reserve the right to be concerned about putting the garage into city hands or the C I C's hands. That is an appropriate concern and should be voiced. Now, for you to say, oh, we'll just dissolve the C I C if an issue comes up, which I understand was said, that is, in essence, taking something that actually could work for the good of the city and just going, hey, we'll just toss that. And I think that is unfortunate for the city. Yes. Those are items that I think are legitimately appropriate to bring up. I voted for the bankruptcy attorney without hesitation. And I voted for the bankruptcy attorney because I felt the city needed protection as that went through bankruptcy court. I will vote for things that protect the city and protect our residents. One of the good things about the horror that became University Square was the first time around, we kept the garage out of city hands. Not we, I wasn't part of the council that did it. I didn't have any input into it, but they kept it out of the city hands. The overall project, yeah, may go and go well. But I also know you still do not have an engineering study that tells us what can happen to that garage when you take off that piece of the garage. Because I asked the question, and I was told that didn't happen. Finally, you know, you make statements, and you've made a lot of statements public tonight about discussions that were held in executive session. My understanding is you can do that. But then please remember that anybody else can make public things that have been said in executive session by you as well. And that breaks the purpose of executive session, as I understand it. If we want to go down that path, mayor, that is a sad path to go down. That hurts the city overall. I have no problem treating you with respect, even though I might not personally like you. I really don't have any problem with that because you hold an office, and I can respect that. What I have heard at the last council meeting from you and the mayor's report in this one, they are not about respect. They are about, gotcha. I'm going to find a way to getcha. And I guess you're having a good time with it. But it demeans the office of mayor, and it demeans the city and university heights. And that I certainly cannot support.
Anyone else? Then we will move on to reports and communications from the directors of the Department of Finance and other departments. We'll start with Director of Finance, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, mayor. I have no report tonight. I will, as I told the Finance Committee last week, the numbers that we ran over last week were unofficial. I have to make some entries to close the month of August, so I should do that this week, and I'll get updated reports out to everybody at that time.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any questions for Mr. Kennedy? Okay, Director of Law, Mr. McConville.
Thank you, mayor. I just want to draw council's attention back to University Square for a moment to highlight what is the important development in the bankruptcy litigation that I want to make sure everyone caught is aware of. With the agreement of Target, Macy's, and the potential developer, the court agreed to a 90-day extension of the schedule. So the bid date is now December 11th. The proposed sale date was December 29th. And we should know what the future of the University Square parcels will be by the end of the year. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McConville. Any questions for Mr. McConville? Next item is public safety, police. Chief Rogers.
Mayor, no report.
No report. Thank you, Chief Rogers. This evening, Chief Perko has been excused, and there is no report from Chief Perko. Service, Mr. Paney.
Thank you, mayor. No report tonight.
No report. Thank you. Housing and community development, Mr. Engelbreit.
Good evening. During the next council meeting, I will be presenting legislation which will be tied to the Taylor Road project, which was planned with the cities of Pluton Heights and East Cleveland back in 2018 or 2019. We are collaborating and will be submitting a grant to NOECA for TLCI funds to do some street repainting, along with adding some bike lanes as well. And that's all I have.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Engelbreit. Any questions, Mr. Engelbreit? Okay, very good. Thank you. City engineer, as everyone's aware, Mr. Chuni's been excused for the balance of the year, but I do have a written report for Mr. Chuni. One, Saybrook-Sillsby, Washington. The residential drive was revised to add a curb due to a resident request. A project is completed under the contract amount by approximately $2,000. Number two, the road program. Final paving on Ashurst and Charney was completed today. Restoration striping to be complete in the next two weeks. Number three, the Saybrook waterline construction began last week. Temporary above-ground piping has been installed. Currently waiting for C W D, the water department, to pass the samples to make sure it is safe to drink. Once approved, each house will be hooked up. By-bypass, piping and excavation will begin. And that is the conclusion of Mr. Chuni's report. Communications and civic engagement, Mr. Cook.
Thank you, mayor. No report this evening.
No report this evening. Thank you. Economic development, Mrs. Drucker.
Good evening, mayor and council. Two reports I want to follow up on, or one is new and then one is a follow-up from last meeting. Zone Co., who is our consultant for our comprehensive zoning code update, our rewrite, their next public meeting is scheduled for October 24th. That'll be from 6:00 to 8:00. We have not determined a place yet, but I just want people to have that on the calendar. That is a public meeting, and this is going into the calibration module of the zoning code update. And then following up from the last council meeting, Councilwoman Sacks, you had asked about the South Taylor project, about a, I guess, order of construction. And I'm just going to read what was given back to me, that they're in the process of getting the next four units ready to start. Order construction is based on how the infrastructure is installed, which is why they started that first building. The next building would be the building in front of that building, so they would run it this way. So there's four units that would go. So one, two, three, four.
It would look like an L?
No, it would go up. So the current building right now, there would be three more buildings in front of that going up towards Taylor Road. When those were completed, and the one that would be to the left of the existing one now would be number five, and then going up to Taylor Road again. That's the order they have now. They said that can change, but why they started it there is because of how the infrastructure was installed. Mr. Rock, you had asked about pricing, so I did send that request as well. Their response is all of our pricing is on the website. The South Taylor project is considered market-rate housing. As most people are aware, supply chain issues and inflation have caused the drastic increases in construction costs. Sale leads are starting to increase now that the units are moved.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Drucker? Howard. Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Next is item 10, the reading in disposition of ordinances, resolutions, motions, and consideration of agenda items. Item A is a motion to enter executive session for personnel matters. I note the presence in the room of Michael Zlesner, HR manager, and Jeremy Iosu, our outside labor counsel. I would suggest that a motion enter executive session to meet with them together with Chief Rogers would be in order at this time to discuss the tentative agreements. Is there a motion?
So, the mayor.
A motion by Mr. King. Is there a second? A second. Second by Mr. Cooney. Mrs. Thomas, we call the room.
Mr. King?
Hi.
Mrs. Sacks?
Hi.
Mr. Cooney?
Hi.
Mrs. Weiss?
Hi.
Mr. Rock?
Hi.
Ms. Marshall?
Hi.
Ms. Weiser?
Hi.
Okay, very good. We will convene over there in the next room. And when we're done, we'll be back to take up.
Here in University Heights, I saw this before you lived. Also, I used to represent Pepper Five. Jared Mandarin has moved Pepper Five out of my district, but I used to represent Pepper Five. Remembering that, we brought you up today.
Thank you for coming.
No, you can have it, but I'm just, I mean, you took it.
This is, I mean, I always say, like, it's people's taxpayer dollars. It's always that. People have things that's accessible for them, and I'm always getting, people will call the phone number for life randomly, but how do you get in contact with Veteran Affairs? How do you get in contact with Medicaid? And I was like, it just makes more sense. Yes. And we have a pretty nice budget at the state level, so why not just use the budget to make this your directors? It goes really well with a lot of our seniors who are looking for ways to work to get information, and we don't have white people anymore.
I'm with the city here as a working, in, since January 6th.
Oh, so I've been in state work for five years, but this is my, University Heights just got added to my district January 5th. So University Heights is still very new to me in other ways with that too, but.
I was with the city of there for the last 22 and a half years.
Oh, so this is a huge shift.
It's a smaller city.
Yeah.
I was there tracking, civil slash tracking. I was a professional engineer, so it's a little bit of a change becoming a service director, but.
Really is.
It's all within the same realm. Would be running early nights there, what, from a city of 28 square miles to a city of 108 square miles.
I know. It's very compact.
Yeah, it's actually one of the highest dens in the city, so.
Very. It's a good walkabout neighborhood.
Correct.
Ms. Wise.
Mr. Kennedy, can you find anything in that periodic knowledge?
I did find some language that I can send you. I'm not quite sure how it's been historically interpreted, but I'll send you it.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution 2023-46?
So moved.
Okay, a motion by Mr. King. Is there a second?
I'll second.
A second by Mrs. Sacks. Any discussion? So, then, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
A very good motion carries. Next is item E, ordinance 2023-51, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for retail electric service with Next Era Energy Services, Ohio LLC, for street lighting. This is being very on emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you have a word.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to get the new contract for street lighting. I spoke with NOPEC and traded some information back and forth. This'll probably save us between $10,000 and $20,000 a year. The bypassable generation fees that we're appealing for First Energy went up last year as a lot of the other utility costs related to electricity. So this will get us a lower rate on that portion of the contract. And I would like it on emergency if they're gonna hold the pricing until tomorrow, until I get the contracts signed and get it in. And I will also be bringing back some more contracts for our other electric services, and I'll try and get those together for a group that the first meeting then took.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion on this? And if not, is there a motion to approve on emergency? By Ms. Weiser, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Marshall. Any discussion? We'll take two votes versus on suspension of rules. Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Is there a motion to adjourn to regular session?
Some moves.
Motion by Mr. Rock, is there a second? I'll second. Second by Mr. Cooney. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Okay, we're back on the record, regular session. Item B is a motion to approve tentative agreement with the term order of police silver unit for new collective bargaining agreement July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026. Now authorize the mayor to execute the same. Who would like to present on this side?
What is it that they're looking for, Mayor?
Oh, I suppose I can go ahead. I'm sorry. What did Jeremy, Jeremy love? Okay. Okay, no, it's fine. Okay, well, we have, with item B and with item C, two tentative agreements with the term order of police. Everybody's seen the, the TAs have executive session. And there are some highlights that have been shared with everyone, including raises over three years in the amount of four percent, four percent, or two percent. Stuff changes as well. And then basically, we're in a position where the term order of police has approved both the silver unit and the golden, a good thing, so item. They voted over the weekend and they have voted to approve a tentative agreement themselves. And now it is up to us and the council to go ahead and, and review this and cast a vote as well. So I would entertain a motion then to approve the tentative agreement with the term order of police silver unit for the new collective bargaining agreement for July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026, and authorize the mayor to execute the same.
Some move.
Motion by, it sounds like Ms. Wise here, and then a second by Ms. Marshall. Any discussion on the motion? There is no discussion. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And motion carries, thank you. Next is item C, approve, a motion to approve the tentative agreement with the term order of police golden for new collective bargaining agreement July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2026, and authorize the mayor to execute the same, same terms essentially. And I refer back to the comments I made on the previous agenda items, their motion. Motion by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Sacks, any discussion? So then, Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
The next item is item D, resident, motion carries, thank you. The next item is item D, resolution 2023-46, accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to county fiscal officer. This is on second reading, Mr. Kennedy.
I just made this a second reading for this item. Again, is certifying the tax rates that were included in the alternate tax budget. It was approved by council file by the time of July. The county sent us the details on these rates. So there's approval tonight. It is filed before the deadline of the year. It's no difference in the inside or outside of the motion.
Very good, thank you. And there's no changes since the first reading as well?
Correct.
Ms. Wise?
Mr. King, do you find anything in that piramidic knowledge?
I, I did find some language that I can send you. I'm not quite sure how it's been historically interpreted, but I'll send you it.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Is there a motion about resolution 2023-46?
Some move, ma'am.
Okay, a motion by Mr. King, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, a second by Mrs. Sacks. Mr. Kane, when do we have this tapped, this down in the calendar?
I believe it's September 29th.
Mr. King, could you amend your motion to consider this on urgency?
I'll amend my motion. What kind of urgency?
Very good.
Second reading.
It's on second reading.
It's on second reading.
Yeah, so if you just want to be able to have it take the effect of law upon passage he's signed before they ever come out, so it would be sent. We won't require suspension of the rules, but we still will require vote of fine. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
Howard, then, for second.
Oh, yes, thank you. So, thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good, motion carries. Next is item E, ordinance 2023-51, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for retail electric service with Next Era Energy Services Ohio LLC for street lighting. This is being very on emergency. Mr. Kennedy, you report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to get the new contract for street lighting. I spoke with NOPEC and traded some information back and forth. This will probably save us between $10,000 and $20,000 a year, but bypassable generation fees that we were paying for First Energy went up last year as a lot of the other utility costs related to electricity. So this will give us a lower rate on that portion of the contract. And I would like it on emergency, they're going to hold the pricing until tomorrow to get the contracts signed and get it in. And I will also be bringing back some more contracts for our other electric services, and I'll try and get those together for approval at the first meeting in October.
Okay, very good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Any discussion on this? And now, is there a motion to approve on emergency? Some, okay, motion to approve on emergency by Ms. Weiser, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Marshall. Any discussion? We'll take two votes versus on suspension of rules. Mrs. Thomas?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
And then on the main motion.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Ms. Marshall? Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye. But thanks to Mr. Kennedy for coming up with a lower rate.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Next is item F, ordinance 2023-52, authorizing the mayor to enter into a two-year contract for public health services provided by the Cuyahoga County Board Health and County here 2024 and 2025 in amounts of $100,877 for 2024 and $111,312 for 2025. This is on first reading, and I give it to Mr. McComber.
Thank you, Mayor. The city enters into an agreement with the county every two years to provide essentially health board services or public health services. The Ohio Revised Code, I believe it's chapter 3709, indicates that every municipal corporation in the state of Ohio has to either provide a city health district or contract with another governmental entity that provides those services. I believe in Cuyahoga County, there's one municipality that has its own health board, and that's the city of Cleveland. All of the other municipalities in the county contract directly with the county health department. This has been a successful relationship over the years, and once it's on second reading, I recommend its adoption.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. McComber. Any questions or discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I know I've used the rat control on this. That's been, they are very responsive. If you see a space at Cleveland Heights and University Heights, we have rats and scum. Some humans, some not. But the rats and the scum, we can get rid of the rats using the health department. On top of that, there is, I know the health department used to do a Don Brook thing that University Heights used to participate in, and we, we stopped it under Mayor Penfelt, which is rather sad. It's usually held over in Cleveland Heights, and I know our service department used to help with the setup on Saturday, so there was some overtime involved. I don't know, Mr. Pennington, if you'd be interested in sniffing that out again, but I think it's that Don Brook thing happens once a year. East Cleveland participates, Cleveland hides. It would be good to see University Heights participate again, because it's also about clean water, environment, all the sustainability issues as well. Just to bring it up that that is something that potentially you could do. And there was a service department connection with it. I don't know if we'd want to do it with the service department, but you could always check with the mayor.
You're, you're saying this was something that was done with the county board of health?
Yes, it was.
Okay, all right. Starting to look at it? Thank you. If there's nothing else on this item, then we'll consider the first reading had, and we'll be bringing this item back for later review. Thank you. Item G is a motion to approve the change order for the Seabrook Road water main replacement project, bringing the cost from $488,219.55 to $492,146.93 for an increase in cost of $11,927.38. Mr. Pennington, I think you're going to address the science.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Members of council, this change order was negotiated with terrorist construction based upon the award of just Seabrook as part of the Seabrook North Cliff Road project for the water main replacement. As this went forward, Joe Chuni originally looked at the bid tabs and divided the incidental items 50% based upon the two streets. In dealing with terrorist construction, the contractor, they did need to modify those numbers to take care of some of their background expenses they had within the incidental items. In doing so, they asked for an increase in the project cost. Cleveland Water Department has agreed to fund 100% of the additional cost, and this item here is just procedural for us to approve the change order in order to move forward with the project as originally intended.
Okay, very good, thank you, Mr. Pennington. Any questions? Mr. Pennington, Mr. Rock? Yes, Mr. Pennington, reading this letter here from Mr. Chuni, our city engineer. He's explaining here that the difference between the bids is the incidentals at the end. And I'm looking at the incidentals on this bid form that's in a packet versus the original one, and he stated that they weren't willing to go down 50% on all of these incidentals, but it shows in the bid form they are, except for the mobilization.
I would have to look into that. Maybe the, the cost difference wasn't the mobilization that they put that in there. I did not have the access to the original bid tools, so.
Okay, and, and I'm fine with that, not that it seems to make sense, but I just wanted to make sure that the record here where we used half of the original bid for these items, terrorists, they're going to split these items in half, I just wanted to be clear that they did on five of the six incidentals.
Right, right, but the mobilizations item that they had to put more funding into for their, bringing their equipment out to the site, whether it be for one street or whether it be for two streets.
So it was just on the mobilization, not on any?
That, that could be, very well be the case. I don't have the entire bid tab for the original with me.
I have. Mr. Pennington, Cleveland Water has already approved this adjustment, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it's simply a matter of our approving it so that it can be a pass through?
Correct.
Thank you.
And?
Yes, this was.
Just a little bit of background. Joe Chuni actually was part of getting our original agreement in 2000, I was on the council then, passed with Cleveland Water when they approached the cities. We were one of the first suburbs that agreed to sign on to Cleveland Water with the non, with Cleveland to not compete with them in economic development in order to get them to pay for these water line replacements. And seeing how much it's benefiting us once again this year, that's the gift that keeps giving. Almost quelled back then, but enough of us were willing to say, hey, you know, we wouldn't be competing with Cleveland anyway, why not sign on? That once again, we did the benefit of Cleveland Water actually paying us not having to pay.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'd like to move.
Okay, a motion to approve by Mrs. Sacks?
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. King. Any discussion on the motion? Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Wise?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Motion passes. Next is item H, motion enter executive session for the purpose of discussing lead proceedings personnel, real estate matters. We have nothing further to, to enter into executive session over at this time. So, when I'm along to reports, standing committees and taking of action thereon, Bill Clinton Housing Chair, when on?
We did have a building housing meeting today. You'll be getting an email from the mayor that we hope we can get some reception to. What we would like to see is flow charts on both sides of the fence, both from housing and from safe build, who does what on the internal and then externally out to the residents, who they would contact for whatever for each of the things. In looking at the safe build contracts, there were a couple of things that did come up that we questioned. That was, that's just got, that process has just gotten started. That contract's not up until the beginning of next year. Perhaps we may recommend looking at. Between the two departments as to who does what. That in part, of course, generated from something that occurred just recently, and we think that may be a smoother way for everything to go. We also would like to thank Mr. Engelbrecht for his time. He went over some of the issues with the 19 referrals to Schaefer Housing Corp. and what actually generated those. We would hope that we would continue to follow up on those things and to actually do what we need to do. There will be another meeting, and again, you'll get an email from me with some requests from the committee, whether, hopefully, you might actually consider it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weiser. Committee outreach, ranking?
Not working.
Thank you, Mr. King. Economics Development Chair, John Rock.
Yes, Mayor, as Ms. Drucker explained in her remarks, we're going to have a committee meeting on October 24th from 16th to go over the next step on zoning. Mrs. Thomas, would you schedule the space at John Carroll last time? Or did somebody else?
I don't remember that, I'll check into it.
Could you check and see if we can get a space for 30 people?
30?
Yeah, and it's October 24th.
Was that, did that all work pretty well?
We like to, at Fort Fine, and there's no parking right there. The room? Room 12? Well, plus they have a conference room at the Science Center. I don't know what the rest of it looked like, but we'll talk.
Mrs. Thomas, maybe see if the OCOM meeting, romanticize it a little.
It's a great, about the same size and closer book. As long as it's closer.
Thank you, Mrs. Drucker. Finance Chair, Michelle Ross.
Sweetie of finance, excuse me, last week, we already discussed all campaign donation ordinance, which will have hopefully the final iteration at our next meeting, which we will be scheduling in October.
Very good, thank you. Recreation Chair, Kristen, no report back. Thank you, Mr. Cooney. Safety Chair, Teresa Marshall.
No report, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall. Services and Utilities Chair, Sherri Sacks.
Thank you. There will be a Service and Utilities Committee meeting on October 10th at 6:30 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Sacks. Committee of the whole, President Michelle Ross.
Yes, unfortunately, the committee of the whole meeting has to be canceled for tomorrow. We have representatives from the Board of Elections that were going to present to us, but one of them has taken ill, so we will hopefully be rescheduling that for the next couple weeks.
Very good, thank you, President Ross. Any reports of special committees and taking of action thereon? Any unfinished in this lady's business? There is none, is there a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Motion adjourned by Mrs. Wise, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. King. Mrs. Thomas, we call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mrs. Sacks?
Aye.
Mr. Cooney?
Aye.
Mrs. Wise?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Ms. Marshall?
Aye.
Ms. Weiser?
Aye.
Very good, we are adjourned at 8:15 PM.